He couldn't get away from his, uh, coaching duties that he was doing. So he's on his way and he's almost here. In the mid and in the interim, we do have our chair, JB Phillips, here. He's going to talk to you a little bit about, um, his knowledge and education and how that applies to libertarian principles and liberties. So, uh, without any other introduction, JB.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm JB Phillips. I'm a local teacher and the current chairperson of the Mason County Libertarian Party. We were less than a year old as an official party. Mason County Libertarians are hosting this for the same reason that there are special interest groups who host these kinds of events, who want to know more about these people and some of their stances on issues that are important, especially in favor of us and our kids. We're good for about 2,400 votes in the county, which is about 600, uh, from nine months ago, I guess, or 1,800, about 2,400. So we're gaining a little bit of ground. A lot of people aren't sure even what a libertarian is. If you saw, um, the knock-knock jokes and the racist jokes they had up there, some that I hadn't seen, I think the shortest description of what the party wants is less government and more freedom. And so we wear T-shirts that say things like, uh, libertarians are already opposing the next mandate. Um, in fact, you know, it'd be normal that we might endorse candidates as a party and we know that that would be kind of silly because just by our nature, well, not the party telling what to do, but this person instead, because that's just kind of in our nature. Um, a more, a more proper and official definition is that libertarians seek to maximize human freedom and eliminate coercion in personal or economic matters. Uh, they advocate that people should have responsibility and govern themselves. Doesn't sound terrible, does it? In fact, it's said that libertarians want to take over the world and insist everybody leave each other alone. Governments, to the extent it exists at all, should be limited to protecting individuals from harm, as if to say, no one can ruin your life better than you can. Libertarians embrace individual responsibility, volunteer to community, and private charity. So if those are things that are of interest to you and maybe you're a bit disillusioned with other parties or retired board and affiliated, please pick up some stuff and run it out. We also tolerate diverse lifestyles and defend civil liberties. There's another saying that libertarians want their gay neighbors to be able to defend their lives and their marijuana plants with guns. That's kind of hidden in that show and maybe your T-shirt as well. Libertarians support the free exchange of goods, services, and ideas. So that's enough about the hosts. That's kind of what we're, we're doing in the county and trying to gain some grounds and get on some ballots and get some people running. If you're interested in running as a libertarian in your architecture here, please come talk to one of the board members. That's enough about us. Let's talk about our guests and the job they're seeking. We've got seven candidates. Will on his way coming from football. Um, they want to put in, according to the CDE, the average board member puts in a 40-hour work week in addition to their regular jobs each month. So they want to work for 40 hours per month on their own time for zero pay. And lately, they've endured some pretty stunning, um, social media abuse that I didn't think our community was capable of. And my opinion is regardless, because I probably won't agree with all of them on all of the topics or all the issues with a single one of them, but I hope, you know, I think they should be revered because they're willing to get out there and, and run for office and just, uh, put themselves out there. So can we thank them before we get started for being a good representative? Thank you.
All right, a little bit about school boards, just really quick. Uh, first school board was started by Massachusetts Bay Colony in 1647, and by the 1820s, state of Massachusetts required those committees to be independent of local government entities. And that's the current model that we use in all, all the states and all the autonomous school districts, um, that exist throughout the United States. So this is kind of why I always argue that a school board is not to be so much about representative form of governing, that rather intended to be a stewardship. I really think of it as a stewardship, a group holding a single employee, a superintendent, accountable, and where the board members are made accountable to the voters in the year we are in the election. The words "school" and "education" don't care in the Constitution, so it's always, you know, it's a state constitutional right, but I'm always a little bit stunned, as you know, as well, I'm certain of mine. So the first one's in the back going, "What do you pay your salaries? Is that my constitutional right?" Well, they work for free and those boards aren't really in the Constitution. So what I really love is that so many of us are learning so much more about how the school board works, about, um, how each individual school works and how a lot of the laws and funding formulas and a lot of those things came to be. Um, so yeah, the 10th Amendment gives the states the right to do this. However, schools are bound by case law. And because we're bound by case law, um, anything from No Child Left Behind all the way up to the Gun Free Schools Act, schools have to respond to that and it makes things that they can do and things they cannot do, things that they must do. So what started out as an intention of local control from something like the state of Massachusetts and a model that everybody followed, that local control has continually in a grad way shifted to federal power. Your local school board is required to do some stuff, and that stuff is, is a credit law, a CD website that anybody can access. If you ever wonder what their limitations are, and they're required to adopt and enforce all policies necessary for the management and government of the public schools in their districts. The board serves three functions. It legislates rules, hears charges stemming from violations of those rules, and employs a superintendent, and delegates the authority to administer the day-to-day operations of the schools to that person, the superintendent. Now, when most of us know schools, because we attended public and private schools, some of them home school, some of us right now have kids in school, some of us who have kids in school also teach school, like me. Some of us who teach school have no kids of our own, some voters are just taxpayers, and that's, that's important too. So I, I got into, to, uh, teaching because I, I was, my first career was, I was a, uh, first I was a sports editor and then I became a news editor, and one of my beats was school board. So I went from taking pictures and covering lots of sports and enjoying school and just seeing how great it was to school board, and I got to learn a bit about how systems work and how problematic it can be. Um, just me personally, this is my 27th year. I taught grades three through 12, uh, most of it middle school. My last 13 here is D-51. Uh, I spent a decade as a school administrator. I've got 25 or 30 seasons of coaching, anything from P V wrestling, uh, basketball track, all kinds of stuff, mostly middle school. I've been a referee, a scorekeeper. Everybody should be a referee once, by the way. If you, uh, like to criticize those schools, just give that a try, just one day. That would be a substitute teacher. If you can do those two things, you'll gain a greater understanding of how schools work. I was a summer school teacher. I've been a special education paraprofessional, um, taught English, social studies, music, guitar, drum line, theater, math, speech, um, and most recently middle school computer science. My brother's a school superintendent. I got half a dozen cousins who are all first generation college graduates, which, which what I am. I'm a ranch, a poor ranch kid from Montana, and now I have, I don't tell people this that often because it's so much disdain that even earned a doctoral degree in policy studies and educational leadership, because I like to, the joke that my mother tells, she says, "My son, he's a, he's a doctor, just not the kind that helps people." He's wrong, but anyway. You can definitely, um, say I've got some skin in the game and know a little bit about how it works. This is my sixth school district, so I get to see a lot of different things. Um, the challenge in, in sort of closing, where I like to challenge the new board members or old ones, I'm sorry. Thank you. Just thinking about asking really good questions. Um, every department sits in front of the board at least once a year and provides an update on how things are going. And I would really challenge you to think deep and ask really good questions. And we have a new level of accountability. I wanted to just mention a couple of things about questions that are being asked. Um, there's a lot of talk and just lots of passion about things like masks and critical race theory and just what are we going to do with COVID and how's this all going to work? And there's not, a lot of parents not asking any of those questions and they're not, that's not their highest level of concern. And there's a, um, a lot of talk about teachers and, uh, being indoctrinators and that they are radical and trying to push their personal agendas. And I call that, um, tail talk. It's the tail of a normal distribution. In other words, there's so few people that represent those two loudest voices or those, those areas that I really would like to challenge everybody to hear a lot of the other things that are going on. Want to know what other teachers are talking about? Because this will probably make you chuckle a little bit. What's my wife's greatest concern in the world right now? Her room is too hot and she doesn't get the control of thermostat. That's what she's upset about. She wants that classroom to not be 82 degrees. You put a bunch of kids in there and make them dance, it's always really hot in there. And she's like, "I don't know what to do about this. How do I get this? I don't have any windows in my classroom." Those are the kind of things that we worry about sometimes. Um, but on a more serious note, teachers really do have a lot of really, um, I think great input that needs to be heard and it's hard to hear a lot of that over the shouting, over the super loud voices. I, I can guarantee you, there's not a kid, I see 100 kids a day, not one of them knows my party affiliation unless their mom shows it to them on Facebook. Oh, look, your teacher's talking. Let me pull up myself. Let me turn it up. They might find out that way, but they don't know my party affiliation, they have no idea who I voted for or anything. And I can tell you in my building, that's the case for most of the teachers. And for those that have, have slipped up and let them know that they're learning from all, and we're all learning some hard lessons about a lot of those kinds of topics. And for younger teachers, those are often pretty hard, hard, uh, lessons, difficult lessons to learn. Um, what are other things that teachers talk about? Things like professional development. I've been teaching 27 years and I get the same training that a first-year teacher gets. So if you did that in a math class, you say, "I don't care how many you know your math facts, you're all going to learn from scratch today." That's bad teaching practice. So what I, I think we need to ask more of is why do we use training on teachers that is a model that we have, we have utter contempt for as teachers? And if you ask teachers about those kinds of examples, let's say, well, yeah, I mean, why, why does middle school have to do school and we don't have a choice, but high school somehow got out of it? I mean, those are the kind of conversations they have. How come we're using Google? Oh, because it's free, but it doesn't talk to school aguise. So you spend all of your human resources time building workarounds to save the school district money because they don't want to invest in anything that captures all of that. So those are the kind of things that aggravate people and they sit around and just go, "You know what? I spent an awful lot of time doing stuff that isn't really anything to do with teaching. It's so far removed from teaching that I don't know why I do some of this stuff." And I really would challenge you to find out what a lot of those things are. Some give me very, very small samples of what I think teachers talk about. What do parents talk about? I got a kid in high school and I have one that graduated recently, and, you know, I've got some concerns. Um, my principal had his seventh grader got quarantined four times. Do you know how hard it is to make that work when you've been quarantined four times? So in our school, we took care of that kid. We made sure that we knew what, you know, you don't, this is not super crucial. I'm going to have you skip that. Don't do that assignment. Let's have you do this one because you're here for this. And try to just manage that and help them get through that kind of thing. I, I don't think that's the case for the high schools. I don't think they're getting that kind of grace. And I would again, challenge you, how much do those kind of things impact student motivation? And I'm going to give you an example of something that I, I think is a big problem. Take a teacher who feels really strong about masks and wearing masks, and though there's no mandate, he's still wearing a mask today. And he goes into the classroom and he's, um, and no one's questioning that, everybody supports his right to wear, and that's fine, but sometimes, what if that same teacher, the same teacher is saying, "I'm wearing this because of science." And then you watch them teach and you realize they're ignoring 50 years of social science research that says five practices he does in the classroom are bad. This grading thing is demotivating for children. This classroom management strategy is demotivating for children. But you, you're wearing your mask because of science? So as a district and especially as individuals, you can't read everything under the sun. So we need some good direction and some good guidance for our leaders. And one of the complaints I hear the most from parents and teachers is, it feels like a letterless ship sometimes because it doesn't seem like our principals are allowed to make decisions. So I hope, I hope that's something that people will hear and reflect on. Um, but, but again, well, thank you for being here and thank you for keeping your hat in the hole, especially given, um, all the flak beginning and a lot of the, the grief and unkind things that are being said to each and every one of you and about each and every one of you. And to the people out there, um, watching on Facebook, and we're live streaming as well, if you can catch it there, please, let's try to find a way to have conversations that are kind, that are without shouting at each other. Sometimes I get mad because I want, I want Robert's attention and I raise my voice a little bit, but then we have a calm conversation usually. No, it's, we, we love the banter in our group and, uh, but we, we have a great amount of respect for each other because we've gotten to know each other too. And if you're struggling with that teacher, parents or teachers, if you're struggling with a person in your world, you really have to bring them in and spend a little bit of time getting to know them. And once you have a little bit of a relationship, it goes so much better. We've got to find a way to talk to each other that's not so unkind, supporters. And if you can speak to your supporters, I would love to see the rest of the time that the ballots are out there where people aren't saying such awful things about the people in front of them. Our treasurer, Mr. Robert Ballard. Thank you. Everybody give it up for JB. There's motivation, still, we have, uh, still motivation, so, uh, we're, we're going to fake it if we, if we need to. Um, again, and I'm Robert Ballard and I am Mason County Libertarian Treasurer. Um, I have been with the Libertarian Party since we founded it back in January. Um, uh, JB, uh, the reason why he got up and talked is because he provided us some awesome leadership since we stood, stood up. We needed a president, um, and I had to be treasurer, and even though he didn't really want to be chair, he, he did it anyway. So we really appreciate his leadership and he's, and the insight as a PhD in education. So that really does help us a lot with things like this as well. Also, uh, we have Rain, he's over here. He's our secretary. He's working on the, uh, the slideshow right here. He'll be the one running that and telling me when the candidates have run out of time. And then we've got Marty in the back, back here. He is also a board member as well, um, and he's been doing a lot to help us with the state party as well, because he's been in the, the party since before he was a party, uh, like the eighties or twenties, something like that. So, um, depends on how old you, you want, you want to call him. Uh, anyway, so what's going to happen today is this is our agenda. Um, this slide presentation is going to mix up the order, so it doesn't matter where they're sitting right here, it's just going to be completely randomized. They have no idea who's going to be called up first and, um, they have no idea who's going to be last. Um, the introduction, each candidate is going to get two minutes for their introduction. Um, and then when Rain tells me they have 10 seconds left, I'm going to raise this up and tell them, "Hey, you need to wrap it up." And I'm going to make it to where you guys can all see it, so that way your eyes can promptly blast over, so that way they know that you're not listening anyway, right? And then, uh, when they are out of time, I will raise this, telling them that they are out of time. And Rain over here, he told me that he is super excited about cutting off mics. So if they go over the time, he's not scared about cutting off that mic. So, all right, so after the intro, again, they'll have two minutes to do that intro. Um, then the Mason County Libertarian Board did come up with a set of questions, but actually I think we came up with like six, but we only have enough time to do three to five, so time is a factor there. Um, and we're going to ask those questions. They're going to have one minute to, uh, answer those questions. And so I know for a few candidates, that's going to be, going to be a challenge. So, um, I bid them good luck with that. And then we're going to go into audience questions. All right, so did everybody get a card? All right, if you've all got a card, that's where you're going to write your questions down. Um, you're, uh, where are my volunteers at? Raise, raise your hand, all my volunteers. All right. So if you're, the volunteers are going to go around, walking around, they're going to grab the cards, and then they're going to go in the back over there and they're going to sort out the ones that are over redundant, um, and they're going to, uh, figure out the ones that they want to ask, and then they're going to write them down, rewrite them on a card, bring them up to me, and then I will ask the candidates, um, those questions. So volunteers, if you can have those up to me before we're done with the first round of, uh, questions, that would be awesome. And then the last event will be the closing statement. So each candidate will again, get two minutes to do their closing statements. Now, there will not be any time given for rebuttals, and this isn't because we don't like argument, we love argument. Uh, there are seven candidates up here, so we just don't have the time to do that. So if a candidate wants to respond to something that maybe another candidate said or something else, um, then they're going to have to eat that up into their next question or in their final statement. cheering and jering. Um, if you've ever taken one of my concealed carry classes, you know that, uh, I love, I love an interactive class. Now, I, I, I like being the center of attention, which is why I'm up here, right? But, um, I also really like having an interactive class. An interactive audience is no different. So, um, if you, if you want to cheer or clap at something, awesome. If you want to boo a little bit, cool. Um, but let's not get too intense with it because if it does get a little too intense, we'll pause the clock and we'll wait for it to calm down, and then when the candidate feels, um, comfortable talking again, we'll start the clock again. That said, we do reserve the right to kick somebody out, so if you're here for the sole purpose of interrupting somebody or causing a scene or something like that, we can kick you out, um, if we so choose. Just remember though, like, um, as Napoleon Bonaparte once said, "Never interrupt your enemy when they're making a mistake." If there's somebody that's up here that is, that's somebody that you don't like, right? Then let them say what they have to say. And if you don't like what they say, go tell your friends, go tell your families, and take that to the ballot box. So, um, let's be respectful of each other and have a great discussion today. All right, so without further ado, Rain, who is going to start off with introductions? You got the mic over there? It's right here. You gotta get the candidate mic. All right, so who's going to start it?
All right, Andrea Heights. All right. Do I just go? You guys got the time? Okay, all right. Well, I'm Andrea Heights. Thank you all for coming tonight and spending time out with us tonight. Um, I am a native of Grand Junction, born and raised here, graduated from Central High School. I have three kiddos, so I'm personally vested in the success of my kids, but also the success of the kids here in Mason County. I, sorry, got to get my breath here. I try to say everything in one big breath. I, uh, sat on the Jim Frisch Community School Board for six years as a board member, and we worked collaboratively both with our administration and our parents and our teachers to really build a great school. Um, we, we built a school on a budget, was transparent with our families and our community. We also went from turnaround status to performance level because we figured out a way that served our children best, um, in assessing them. So I also am just really concerned as a mom of just what I'm seeing our kids, you know, talk about and the distractions that they have in the classroom. We're, we're getting away from precious teaching time of around math, history, science, and English. And, sorry, thought I'd repeat things. Um, and it's really important that our teachers have every moment in the classroom with our kids teaching those things. Um, it's fine if other things want to be outside the classroom for kids to be involved in, but we need to make sure that our precious teaching time is not interrupted with other things, um, outside the classroom. Again, my name is Andrea Heights and I'm running for District C. Again, my name is Andrea Heights and I'm running for District C.
Next one is JB McAllen. Awesome. Thank you, everybody. Uh, I love this format, that's exciting. It's like a little game show almost. Thank you all. I'm glad you mentioned JB, uh, freedom, or I think it might've been Robert too. Uh, wearing a gold tie for you folks today, just so you know. Education to me is setting up our future generations for that freedom. Give them the path to go on to the next level, whether that's career or college. We have them in K through 12. I'm a former teacher, former student, former coach. I care deeply about education. It's something that's mattered to me a lot. And I have some serious concerns about what's going on right now in the classroom. And that's with the loss of teachers. We cut over 50 teaching positions just last year and just the other day, we still have 60 empty teaching positions. That includes aides. So over 23 of those are special ed. We are burning out our teachers right now, constantly. We have to refocus our resources exactly where they belong and that's in the classroom, first and foremost. And that's how we can support every kid, no matter what path they're on, to succeed at their full end. And this is gonna take an effort from the community. Our board has to do a better job of listening to you all, going out to you, going beyond the boardroom. That's why I'm so excited about tonight. I love the questions that we get in these moments. I wanna do this past just the campaign trail, listen to you because I know together we can support every kid every day and make a real difference for our community and country. Thank you. Next one is David Combs.
I don't think I need a mic. Uh, my name is David Combs and I've lived in the Grand Valley since 1980. There's a, there's a couple of boxes that I checked for JB. Uh, one of them is, I used to be a basketball referee. As a matter of fact, I refereed both college and high school basketball. And he's absolutely right. If you ever wanna be, if you ever wanna challenge, try to referee. Because here's what happens. You can call a foul on this side of the room and this side of the room cheers. You can call the same foul on this side of the room and that side of the room cheers. Okay, so that's one of the things that you're looking at. That's, that's something or somewhere that some of the school board meetings have digressed to. And it's, and it's really sad because what we all should be about is educating our kids. Nick makes a very valid point in terms of where we are with teachers. JB indicated, what does his wife think about the most in terms of her teaching day? My daughter is a first grade teacher. You wanna know what she thinks about the most? Who's gonna watch her class when she's gotta go potty? Alright? And the reason why I say that is, uh, she's got a one-year-old who was sick. She had to stay home with him. Her substitute teacher was the librarian, okay? And yes, it was somebody from the school system, but still, you're talking about a librarian being a substitute teacher. I think what we have to do is, we have to realize that our students are our most precious, most precious product that we all can produce. And I don't mean just physically produce. Uh, you probably all have heard the term, "It takes a village to raise a child." But what you have to remember, I, I've added this, that it takes a community to educate a child. Because there are some, there are some people in this community that don't have children that attend District 51. They've never had children, but yet still, they are responsible for educating all of our kids.
Alright, thanks JB. And everybody, if you guys do have those question cards and they're filled out, go ahead and raise them in the air and our volunteers will run by and give them. The next one is Angela Lima.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for coming out tonight and joining us. My name is Angela Lima, I'm running for school board in District E. I've been in the Grand Valley for about 15 years. Uh, we moved here to open a cosmetology school, which we've run now for the last 15 years. In that time, we've seen about 700 students come through our school. Most of them graduates of District 51. And what we've noticed is a strong decline in their abilities to do what I think are the most basic things. Math skills, reading and writing, science skills. We don't get that much into history, but those are also, that's also one of the things that I've been most concerned about. So as, uh, several community groups were looking for people to run for school board, um, my name came up and I was asked if I would, if I would run. And I said, you know, I, I would love an opportunity to get involved and really help change things so that these kids get that foundational education they need. Whether they're going on to college, going into the workforce, going into a trade school. These are really basic skills that I think our kids must have in order to go on and lead a successful adult life. So the first thing I wanna do is really dive in, look at our curriculums, look at the way that we're doing things and try to do things better for these kids. The second thing is, we have talked to a lot of teachers. Many of them are very frustrated with the way that their work environment is and again, how they're able to do their jobs. So I think it's really important to talk to the people that are actually in there doing the work and find out what works for them and find out what is important. And do those things, bring them along with you. The last thing would be bringing the entire community together so that our school system is a reflection of the community that our schools.
Good evening. My name is Will Jones. Uh, I've been in the valley for over 20 or 25 years. I'm a high school football coach at Central High School. Uh, I have eight kids that I, um, I take care of, you know, from marriage and on my own. Um, I've been a football coach with, with the little kids for probably over 15 years. Um, in this time, uh, I've seen many, many, many failures and I've seen many successes. Um, I have an eight-year-old daughter who goes to Pomona Elementary. I have a son that goes to Orchard Mesa Middle School and I have a son that goes to Central High School. So I have kids on all three levels. And also being a coach, I've seen a lot of fails with the school district. Um, I get to, I get, every Monday, I get a report and it's an algebraic report. And so I get to look in the faces of anywhere from 15 to 20 of my football kids and tell them, "You can't play this week because you're in algebra in math." Or "You're in algebra in history," or "You're missing science," or "You haven't helped for two weeks." And, and we fail those kids. I feel like, you know, sometimes it's more important for those kids to play football or play sports and not their educations. And then we have their parents. The parents feel that they're uneducated, they're unhelped, they can't, they're helpless because we're not talking to them. Um, our, there's so much disconnect from the teachers and our parents, our parents aren't involved anymore. And how do I involve in that is I, I can work as a buffer between that. I work with kids, I've been doing this a long time and I can talk to parents, I know what they're going through. I know where, you know, they're coming from, where, you know, where they live, who they talk to, how to, how to educate these kids. And I think that we need to get better at it. I think that as a board, we spend too much time talking at people instead of to people. And we can't have that. Our board doesn't know what's going on in our schools because we don't go there. We don't visit the schools. I mean, we've talked to a teacher that, you know, built a brand new school, it was great, they were part of it, they have a plan on the ball. But why? They haven't been there. We haven't gone there, we haven't visited, we haven't took time to see what's going on in those schools. So how are our teachers know that they're being, uh, taken care of and being taught out? Well, as I said, my name is Will Jones and I'm, I'm doing those things. Thank you.
And then Austin Dewitt.
Uh, thank, thank you all for being here this evening. It is a pleasure to be in front of you. My name is Austin Dewitt and I am running for District C as well. Uh, and I'm, I'm a graduate of District 51 from Freedom Monument High School. I graduated in 2019. And I've served on some local boards here in Mesa County from Relay to Relay for Life of American Cancer Society to, uh, my local church council, as the youth representative where we made decisions on budgets uh, and everything that impacted the congregation. Uh, you know, and, and again, I'm rea, I'm running because I talk to teachers and I, I understand what they're going through. For example, I know of a teacher at Orchard Mesa Middle School who, um, quite frankly is my mom, who's a PE teacher. And they're taking 150 kids a day in their PE class because there's no subs and they have to take these kids on. It's the only room that can take this many kids on. You know, and, and again, it's a teacher shortage. You talk to them and you listen to them and one of their biggest things is the mental health of the students. You know, they, they wonder, they oftentimes have to wonder, the students, are the, are the students getting enough food? Are they adequate time, you know? And then on top of that, they also have to play math police when there was a mandate. So they lost, quite frankly, almost two years of learning from going to online learning to, you know, coming back in masks and constantly having to interrupt class every five seconds. Pull your mask up, pull your mask up, pull your mask up. So they, they quite frankly, lost a lot of teaching time on that. And, and again, you know, the thing with Google Classroom, I've heard that quite frankly from about 15 teachers, how they, you know, why does this grade level get to use Schoology and this one gets to use Google Classroom? You know, and in my household, it quite, it causes a lot of problems because I can't help with Schoology and, you know, my mom who is on Google Classroom can't use Schoology.
Alright, thanks Austin. And then we've got Trish Mayer, last but not least.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Trish Mayer and I'm a city school board member right now. And thank you for such a warm introduction JB for, um, appreciating everybody who throws their name in the half or something like this because, uh, I can probably speak for everybody. Running a campaign is not very easy when you have other obligations in life. I'm sorry, I respect, uh, people who are running for an office like this. Um, I am a deputy district attorney here in Mesa County. I supervise crimes against children in juvenile court. And that's really what is my nexus to the school district is I deal with children who are victims, children who are offenders every day in trying to figure out how to connect the dots, find the gaps and provide services for children. Uh, so that's really where a lot of my motivation comes from right now. I'm also a product of District 51. My children also attended the same schools I did, Pomona West and Grand Junction High School. Um, I went away for college, I went away for law school and then we returned to Grand Junction to raise our kids in the public school system. Um, I think the school system does a lot of great things. We've been around a variety of forums over the past month or two and, um, although there's, uh, some criticism on many aspects, our kids are outstanding. There's a lot of great students, there's a lot of phenomenal teachers. And the only way that happens is to have safe and inspiring, uh, safe and inspiring schools. So some of the basic things that I care about is number one, kids need to feel safe and welcome to come to school. We need to establish that kids can develop growth in attending school. We're not just assessing to assess, we're not just testing to test. We're trying to help teachers and teachers are the ones in there doing the work. They're the heroes of what makes our kids, uh, the, the successes that they are. Uh, but we're doing assessments so that we can establish growth. Um, lastly, we're looking for options for our kids. Um, so that's my interest in being on the school board and retaining my seat and I'm Trish Mayer for District C. Thank you.
Alright, so for the first question, what do you believe is the role and purpose of the school board and how do you plan to fulfill that purpose? First one is gonna be Austin Dewitt. Again, you have one minute.
Uh, that's a really good question. I think the role is to obviously supervise the superintendent and make sure that the superintendent has what they need and the resources that they need to have a successful district. Uh, I also believe that it's the role of the district to delegate and make sure that all policies are followed and correctly, um, enforced. And again, just to make sure that the district has the resources and the necessities and the needs that it, it needs to run and on a day-to-day basis.
Alright, thank you, Austin. Next, Angela Lima.
So the roles on the board are to set policy, oversee the budget and oversee the superintendent. I think the most important part there is setting the policy, making it clear, making it completely concise so that you can make sure that the superintendent is upholding those policies and, uh, calling her or him responsible for that. The other thing is watching over the budget. Big budget here in Mesa County. You need somebody that is used to working with budgets. I have a lot of experience both with regulation and working with the budget.
Thank you. All motivation, still motivation. Let's go. Alright, Will Jones.
Um, as the other two candidates have already said, uh, we are in charge of the budget. We wanna make sure we're, we're doing the things we're supposed to be doing, being transparent, making sure that our, our, our parents know that every dime is being spent the right way and letting them know, you know, where their money's going to. Um, we have to make sure that the superintendent is doing their job, they're serving their, uh, accountability. We're holding them accountable to their things and making sure we're holding our teachers and everybody else accountable as well. And then lastly, like, you know, our policy, we need to make sure that our policies are being upheld, our curriculum is being taken care of and we know what's being taught in our schools.
Thank you, Will. David Combs.
Well, it's interesting that this, this question is asked because, and what you're gonna hear is that the, uh, that we're in charge of the superintendent. But what we also have to remember is that the super, the superintendent is going to be providing us with feedback. And so not only will we be getting feedback from the superintendent, but hopefully we'll know that that is coming from the teachers, from the teachers, from the lunchroom lady and also from the school bus drivers. I think what I bring to the table is just that thing of listening. I think what you have to do, you have to be able to listen. You may not agree, I may not agree with what the superintendent says. However, I will learn from him and through learning, he can be a great administrator.
Alright, thank you, David. Trish Mayer.
I don't have much to add. We oversee the superintendent, we oversee the budget and we are the board who oversees policies. I've learned during this last year, there are a lot of policies we don't give effect to. There are a lot of policies that say the district will do something and we have no auditing process. Um, as an attorney, I just, I, that happens to be something I'm interested in because it's very much like looking at laws and trying to understand it. But I really think as it comes to policies, if we're saying, if, if our policies say we're going to do something, we need to give effect to that. And if we don't do that, we need to relook at those policies and make sure we give effect or change those policies. Uh, lastly, I think we can give, um, some overall philosophies and goals to the superintendent who is ultimately responsible for being the largest employer here in Mesa County.
Thank you, Trish. And JB Allen.
So the purpose has already been laid out. Uh, how I plan to fulfill that is very simple. Uh, Brian, Brian Hill will be our new superintendent coming up next year. He and I are friends, but we disagree on a lot of things. And I believe that is the purpose of the board, to have those disagreements. I think too many times I've witnessed as a member of the public rubber stamps happening from the board perspective. And I don't want that to happen because there's legitimate questions and there's legitimate concerns. I was brought, uh, concerned by a parent just the other day. I have on my COVID, my COVID tracker, one symptom. They told me two, it's been one and they're sending my kid home. That's a question I would bring directly to Dr. Hill at his next update. Why are we having difficulties with how we're approaching, uh, how we present COVID and other issues? So making sure that we have those questions to the superintendent and making sure that they answer the phone.
Alright, thanks JB. Andrea Heights.
Heights, yeah.
Heights, sorry.
Heights is German.
Heights.
Well, I can't add much more other than that. One thing people don't realize is that the board is actually responsible for helping pick the curriculum for the district. The state actually, um, picks the state standard or, you know, stipulates what the state standard is. But the board actually gets to have a say in the curriculum. And I know a lot of parents have been, uh, really curious about that. I think also the board needs to really stipulate the goals, expectations and the vision for the superintendent. Any good business does that for whoever is heading up their business. And I'd really like to know what the board asks the superintendent to do. So amongst these other things that they set, that what the board does, those could be the things that we also need to consider.
Alright, thank you. Alright, the next question. Given recent controversies like app install, net, app install admin and upcoming challenges like GJHS, how do you, as an elected official, plan to monitor administration and hold them accountable to the public? Austin, you're up first again, sorry, bud.
So I definitely plan to oversee the entire budget and its entirety, the entire process, irregardless. Um, and again, I also plan to audit and, and quite frankly, review every policy in the books to make sure that they're following policies, the audit and the budget to a T and to make sure that they are quite frankly, being extremely transparent with taxpayer money. Uh, because again, you guys have, you guys are paying the taxes and... Uh, because again, you guys have, you guys are paying the taxes and, and this is your money that we are dealing. Policies are also going to be, policies are in place to be followed and as, as a board member overseeing the administration, I would, I would make sure that every policy is followed and that they know exactly what the policy is when they walk in as superintendent and administration.
All right, thank you Austin. Nick, you're up next.
It's gonna be coming out to the public. Uh, you know, I've seen times in board meetings, which I've kind of referred to as the three minutes of hate of just you go up there, you spill what's on your minds and then you don't get an answer. I've made public comment before and it's so frustrating and they'll say, well, we'll get back to you. I haven't received an email before. We have to do town halls. We have to go out and get questions from the community and then answer those questions. Not come back with the email at some point, some way down the road. So it's going out to you, is bringing the superintendent with us so you get the direct answers that you deserve and that's something that I'll push for. I asked about the last time they did a town hall, uh, that's a great idea, I can't remember when. We gotta change that. We gotta change that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Will, you're up next.
Um, once again, we talk about being transparent. We have to definitely make sure we make ourselves see. Um, too many times, like I just mentioned before, we have to walk through to like to, to the school, walk through Grand Junction High School, walk through everything, every part of it, go through a charity park piece by piece and let the people know what they're spending their money on. Um, if they want a brand new gym, then we have to figure out the best budget, the best thing for it. It doesn't have to be top of the line or, or, you know, the, the best thing, we need to figure out what, what, what to deal us with it. We need to let you know what every nail, every piece of flooring, every carpet is being spent on. And if we can come in under budget, that would be a great thing to let people know, hey, you, you gave us this much money, we came in under budget here, so we'll be able to put this much money back into Grand Junction. So as long as we're in the schools and walking through and, and holding everybody accountable and, and the construction people and all these other people, then that'd be a wonderful thing. So we're not sitting behind a desk just wondering what's going on, we're in the middle of it with you people.
All right, thank you Will. Andrew, you're up next.
Probably the, uh, the biggest issue, the, uh, the happen stall debacle was the, uh, literally the lack of auditing. I'm a business owner, we're audited continually and I think that was one of the biggest challenges regarding happen stall. Uh, regarding Grand Junction High School, there's a bond that's going to be voted on by you. One of the beauties about the bond is this, uh, any money's left over from that bond will go to pay off the bond. So they're not gonna be used for different, uh, prizes. So that's one of the things that is, that's one of the multiple things that's good about the, uh, the bond. As far as, uh, the administration, I think what we have to do, it's similar to what Nick said, you have to go beyond, you have to get into a classroom or you have to be able to hear what the teachers have to say because, uh, Dr. Hill could simply be a filter and we all know what happens with filters. So I think as, as, as board members, we have to get out there and listen to what it's being said.
All right, thanks. And Angela, you're up next.
So having attended the last few board, uh, meetings that became quite contentious and there were some issues around that, it just really screams out that we have to involve people. We have to involve the community. We've gotta listen more to, to, to parents, we've gotta listen more to maybe business owners and there are a lot of great people in our community that can help us to do everything better. So I think really including them, uh, I love the idea of getting every person heard regardless of how long it takes. We absolutely have to hear from everybody in our community. As it comes to Grand Junction High School specifically, we've gotta keep our eye on this. We've got a one shot here to redeem ourselves as the board for being good stewards of taxpayers' money. So we're gonna have to watch this thing very, very closely, watch every line item and do the best that we can to make sure that we come in under budget and put that money right back against the bond.
Andrea. Andrea.
So I have a little bit of view on happen stall because same on the board for not overseeing it because all of it comes from leadership, right? Because if they, they should have been more involved in whatever was going on. So I think there's some responsibility that falls back on the board in that situation as well. And I agree with Angela as far as Grand Junction High School. What's done is done. I wish we would have had a little bit more bids and, and input early on. I know we did get a lot, but I think we could have gotten more to really show the community that we've really boiled it down. What's done is done, it's now gonna get to the voters and I would commit to coming in under budget so that that money goes back to pay down the bond.
I'm Trish. Somehow we got the same order on the second question, I have no idea how.
Thank you. Well, number one, I can tell you, this cannot happen by one board member alone. It takes a collective number of people who all bring different skills to the table, whether, whatever profession they bring, this has to happen as a group. Um, I'd say two of the best examples of what I promote is how many people participated in the strategic plan this past year, in the past few months? So that's one of the major ways school, school board candidates can get involved, you as a community to get involved so we can hear what the issues are. We're in the middle of this long-term strategic plan that will, um, open with Dr. Hill in the near future and that's one of the main ways we're trying to get community heard. The Grand Junction High School bond is another great example of that where the board look to outside people, outside stakeholders, it doesn't matter if they're Republican, Democrat, unaffiliated, an outside set of eyes to bring us to good numbers. And the estimate, the estimates that we have were really just to get us to a bond amount. It hasn't been bid out in full, but I think opening it up to that outside people is super important. Thank you.
Thank you. A little bit of technical difficulties. Also, if you've never been to one of my classes, you know that I hate awkward silencing, so I'm just gonna fill this awkward silence as much rambling as possible we can. All right, question three. When a student wishes, okay. Okay. Uh, when a student's wishes or preferences are at odds with their parents, whose interests should the school prioritize and why?
Uh, that's a tricky question for sure. Um, you know, I, I still think that parents are responsible for their children. Um, there may be, there may be a, a point where the child's opinion can, and their feelings can come more to the front as they get older, but this is a very broad question. Are we talking about seven-year-olds? That's a different question. Are we talking about seventeen-year-olds? Again, I, I think I would have a different answer based on what, people with a lot more experience in that we have than myself in order to decide where and how much the child's input or the parent's input would be the most important in the way of.
All right, thank you. Will Jones, you're up next.
So I, I think we have to look at the safety of our child, our children. Um, their, their safety is very important. So it depends on what, what the situation may be, but we have to look at their kid's health as, as the most important thing. Um, but we also have to make sure that they understand that their parents are raising them, their parents are the best doctor, the best parent, they're the best leader for them. So we have to make sure that they understand that we have to involve the parents at some point, but we have to consider the child's, you know, mental stability and wellbeing et cetera. So we talk about being safe and keeping our kids safe, well, this is one of the ways we have to do it.
Thank you. And Nick, you're next.
Yeah, broad, broad question. Uh, the thing that my mind jumped to is in how important that safety is, uh, teachers are one of the mandatory reporters and one of the first on the front lines. I've actually had the terrible, um, event where I had to report something of a student that was being mistreated by their parent. And what I worry about, and I'm gonna harp on this this whole election, is when we have so many students in these classrooms that they don't feel connected to their teacher, that they're not able to share things that are going on and that are in danger for them, then we're not able to catch those things. And of course, I mean, Angela laid it out, like, it's your parents. I still listen to my parents. I think that's a very important thing to do. And when you become eighteen, that's your life, but make sure that relationship is consistent. You should have, parents should have a good relationship with a teacher, just like the student does. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we've got Austin.
Uh, again, much like the other candidates have stated, that this is a tricky question. Uh, it all, it really depends on the situation. However, the parents do know the children best, but the person that knows the child better than anybody else is the child. So I think we have to listen to both the parent and the child in these situations and, and take, and do what's best for both of them rather than just the child. The, the parent is of course, the best doctor, parent, educator, the parent is the best everything for a child and they know the child better than the district does. They know the child better than the teacher does who has them for only, you know, a couple of months out of the year. So again, I, it's a very tricky question because much like Angela, you know, are we talking about a younger group of students or an older group? It, it really depends on the situation and their age, but I think we need to talk to both the parents and the students and do what's best for both rather than just one group or the other.
All right, thank you. And then David.
I've got four kids. I got three grandchildren and I don't think it's a tricky question, okay? I think the parents, doesn't matter how old that student is, I mean, if they're living under their roof and, and that's basically what we're talking about when we're talking about a teacher, if we're talking about them being in a school. Typically, you'll, you'll rarely find a student who is not living at home that is still in school. I, I think, like the other candidates indicated, that yes, there is a time where you must listen to the student, however, you cannot omit the parent. I think the parents play a vital role and their role is, I'll go the other way, teachers play a vital role, but their role is not as vital as that of the parent. So I do believe there is a, uh, there's a happy medium in there, but parents are, parents are the leaders.
Thank you. Trish.
It's always an advantage to go last because you have a little more time to think. As David's talking too, I was thinking as, as we pass on this, uh, to me, it's not as tricky either, like, parents ultimately are responsible for their educational needs of kids. Maybe the question or the answer might be a little different if it related to medical or mental health because I think legally, there might be a different age for which a child can take responsibility. But even though parents may be the ultimate ones responsible for making their educational decisions for kids, it's never gonna happen without buy-in from the kid, right? So even if a parent is ultimately responsible, if you have a child who's not gonna wanna come to school, who's not gonna want to be in a particular schedule, a particular kind of class, AP and non-AP, WCCC or wherever, if you don't have buy-in from the kid, it's not going to happen. So I think if there's ever a disagreement with parent, kids, it'd be nice to have them kind of mediated with a school counselor to ultimately reach a joint decision.
Thank you. And then Andrea Hightes.
So yes, parents are the primary stakeholder in a kid's education and they are the primary person regarding for the children and their decisions. What I think we're getting at is we cannot put our teachers or our schools in a precarious situation of withholding information from, from kids' parents. And that's what some kids, I think, are trying to maybe do by garnering sympathy about, well, my parents don't understand why I'm not. Like other things are said, bring other professionals in to help open the lines of communication, but parents are primary.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna do one more question, one more time, party, and then we'll move on to the, uh, audience questions. Some schools have proposed mandating that quote, "Students and teachers must refer to people by their preferred pronouns and names." To what extent should the school be allowed to compel speech? Will.
Um, that's a great question. Um, dude, I mean, we, we all say to each his own, these kids, we, we, we talk about our kids, you know, and it's, that's truly what it's about, is educating our kids. Um, if a child has decided that they wanna become named as a pronoun, then by all means, we can call them that. I mean, there's nothing against it. We're, we're, as long as these kids are getting their educations and we're doing what they're doing, we're not judging them, we're not telling them anything different, then you call them by the pronoun. You know, and if that's what they wanna do, that's what they wanna be known as, that's what you learn better, then that's what it is. Um, so, and, and I think that it's, there's nothing wrong with it. So I think we should be, if the child wants to be learned by the pronoun, then we do it.
Okay, and you? Nick, you're up next.
Yeah, uh, Will's right. I mean, I don't think mandating is necessary, but, um, if a student would prefer to be called something, they need to feel safe in their schools. And I've talked to students that had a teacher ask them that at the end of the year, they said it made a big difference to them. So no skin off my nose, I mean, it's kind of libertarian principle in a way, you know? You call what you want. Um, yeah, so I'm right there with you.
All right, thanks Nick. Austin, you're up next.
Again, I mean, that's pretty simple, like the other candidates have said, if it makes the kid feel safe at school and it makes them feel like they're valued in the community, by all means, call them by their preferred pronouns. Um, I really don't think mandating is necessary because again, if it makes them feel safe and it makes them feel valued and it makes them feel like they're a part of this classroom and it, it can make the mental health portion of it better for these students, by all means, do it.
Awesome, thank you. Angela, you're up next.
So that mandating is my issue with that piece of it. Uh, we, we, these teachers have so many different things to deal with, um, so many different issues of, besides what they're gonna teach that day. And they are trying to spin a lot of plates in the air all at one time. So when you start to mandate something, uh, there can be real ramifications if you don't get something right. And from firsthand experience, I can tell you that it is difficult not to slip up. It is difficult to, um, not use maybe a more, um, general pronoun for someone that wants to use something different. So again, I think we just have to be kind and do the best that we can to give these kids a safe environment so that they can learn the things that they're willing to learn.
All right, thank you. Andrew, you're up next.
Well, I think I referred to this in my introduction, that I think kids need to feel safe and welcome. I don't know that this needs to be an issue about mandates at all. Um, I, we were, my husband and I were having dinner recently with a teacher out at one of the high schools and his wife and I asked him how this was going because we struggle this with, with this in court proceedings. When we have court proceedings with juveniles, we have the same issues going on. I don't think teachers need a mandate. Teachers want kids to feel safe and welcome. These teachers wanna be positive role models in their life. They wanna be inspiring and they're gonna do the best they can to make their kid feel welcome.
Thank you. Andrea, you're up.
So I think we just need to focus on being kind to one another. I don't think we need to be mandating how teachers need to use pronouns of students. My issue is you can't violate somebody else's conscience about how they should address someone else. I, I just think we need to be kind to one another and have a kind classroom because we're gonna get on a slippery slope, like some others have said, where if you don't use the right terms, it's now gonna become a bigger issue for that student or for the school. And so let's just be kind to one another and all these teachers, they wanna make their classrooms that way, but any kind of mandate about what words we need to use is not appropriate.
Well, I think, uh, you know, everybody's made a valid point. Uh, I think something that was left out was individuality. Uh, pronouns, pronouns are identifiers and, and sometimes what there is used to identify is someone's, uh, individuality. And that's something that we want all kids to learn, we want them to be individuals. We want them to be proud of what they are. Uh, I, I think the, the mandate, I don't think that's an issue at all. I think if a teacher wants to assist in the learning process, they will assist in that individual's identity. It's the, and that is the key. I think what they have to do is you have to remember, we're all different, we all have our own identities. And what pleases us the most is when someone does identify us as who we wanna be identified as.
Thank you. All right, folks, so now we're gonna start moving into the audience questions, the questions that, uh, you guys all came up with. Again, my volunteers went back and they covered some of the redundancies and they gave me way too many questions for me to be able to ask. Um, so I get to be the guy that has to pick them. Uh, the first one, just because I, I just wanna introduce a little bit of contention in here, what makes you different from your opponent or opponents? And? And Trish, you're up first.
I would say a couple of things. Number one, I'm an attorney and I'm probably interested in things that other board members are not interested in. And I think that's why it's great to have board members from all walks of life because whatever skills I bring are going to be different from somebody else's. So I happen to be interested in working on projects that other school board members don't work on. Secondly, I would say my profession relates directly to kids in schools. I work day in and day out with kids who are victims and offenders. We are constantly trying to figure out how to better help them navigate to be successful in school, to be successful in society. So I think that's probably the main thing that distinguishes me is that's actually part of my current profession right now is just working hands-on with kids. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Austin.
I think something that makes me unique is I am the closest in age by a long shot to... But I think I'm the closest, you know, to the students in schools. And that makes me unique because I know what the students are learning and I graduated within the last five years. So, you know, I know what the students are learning. Granted, it may have changed in the last couple of years, but, you know, being almost three years out of high school, I'm the closest and that makes me unique because I know what the kids respond to and I know how they respond. And then I know what styles that they respond to. And it allows me to, you know, be more in touch with teachers and students and parents because then I can be more transparent with, well, you know, this teacher has this style. So I think that makes me more unique than some of the other candidates.
Thank you. Angela.
I think there's been enough name calling about this. I think we've got enough contention for the weekend. Yeah, things got a little bit ugly on, they have got a little bit ugly, they are real ugly on social media. And I just want to say before I say what I'm different about is we can be kind. We can be opposing, we can have different ideas. We're here to put our ideas out to the community and then you guys decide, I don't want to be represented. But, you know, we can, I don't believe any of us have been ugly to each other. And so we would really love it if the community would follow along because we just don't mean that. So I run a school, I own a school, so I have a lot of experience with budget, regulation, curriculum, students, teachers, all of it.
Thank you.
So I actually have kids in school. Last year, we experienced obviously wearing masks and remote learning. And I can't remember the last time we actually had a board member who actually sat on the board with kids in school. And I know a lot of the board members here have had kids in District 51, but I think there's something, when I sat on the Junior College Board, we actually sought out parents to be parent members of our board because there's a unique perspective of when they have to live it and read it every single day. So I just, I bring that to the table, which is different than my opponent's. You know, and I've just been, I've been on a board for six years, know how to function, know how it needs to work, and we were successful with it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I got nothing bad to say about Will. It's not my place. My place is to just say what makes me different. And I think it comes from classroom experience. You know, I was a teacher full-time for two years. I've got to substitute teacher for three. I've been every middle school and high school in our district, able to teach at them as well as a few elementary schools. So I know the challenges we're facing. I know that we have an education crisis on our hands. The last set of teachers are retiring. The one that came after that, there were no jobs because it was the '08 crash. And now there's just not enough resources for them and they are burning out and we are really losing out on some great teachers. So my focus comes from my experience in making sure that we prioritize the classroom where the learning happens.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So what makes me different from my candidate, actually, from my opponent? I work with about 600 youth kids a day. I see between, I have 500 in our youth football league. I have 100 freshmen, JV and sophomores and seniors that I work with on a high school level. So I see these kids every day. I know what they go through. I work with 12 of some of the best educators and administrators in business. I talk to them on a daily basis, so I see where education is going. I see their frustrations. I know what it takes to talk to our parents. I see angry parents. I talk to parents. I talk to our students. I know they're well-hearing. I know the difference, you know, I know how to be, being a minority myself. I talk to a lot of minority kids who feel they're being treated different and I know what struggles are going through. So that makes me different to a lot of people and I just got to go that way and be able to bridge some of the gaps that are on our system today.
You know, we're all here and we're telling you what we can do, what we should do, and what we want to do. What differentiates me between myself and my opponent is I have 48 years in the school system. And by that, I mean I've had four children go to D-51 schools. We've been fortunate enough to have all of them be college graduates. However, with that being said, we've had two extremes. We had one daughter that was eligible for the ID program, but she decided that it wasn't something that she wanted to do. We had a son that was on an IEP, which is Individual Education Program. And what he had to do from K through 12, he had individualized education. I think what I bring to the table is experience with District 51. I've officiated with other teachers and administrators. We've had one-on-one talks about what school is, what it's not, and how it can be better.
All right, you did all right. Baby says that he's got an announcement for you.
Quick announcement from Rachel at the Novel Club. When we're done here, she's going to stay open later for us. So if you want to take a conversation and I think some of the candidates will hang around, this is a great place. She could give everybody in the room 10% off, so tell her you came from here. She may give a little bit of a discount and she got coffee, burritos and things like that. So when we're all done, we won't stay in here because we actually got a clean room. We'll move everybody to the Novel Club.
All right, so go get your stuff to the Novel Club. So the next question, let me see here. All right. Do you think that the teachers' unions play too big of a role in our schools? Angela, you're up first.
Well, to some degree, I think that's up to the board. Teachers' union, you're going to have to negotiate with them regarding their representation of the teachers. So I think it's really a good thing. It's all in the way that you approach it. I think you have to approach it open-mindedly and just keep your eye on what is right for the community. What is right? What is our community members asking us to represent and how? And just making sure that we stick with that. There's no, I don't think there's anything wrong with the teachers' union. I just think that it's in the way that you negotiate with them and the way that the board sticks to the policies and the things that are important.
All right, thank you. Austin, you're up next.
In Mason County, I don't think they played a huge role. They played a role. As, you know, they are the voice of some teachers. Obviously, in Mason County, they don't have all of the teachers on board in the union. But again, they do play a role. They, you know, negotiate with the school board. And I think, again, much like Angela, you know, we have to keep our eyes on the education of the students. And we need to keep an open mind and have these civil conversations with the school boards. And, you know, make these decisions based on what they say and, you know, what we think is best for the students.
Thank you, Austin. Will, you're up next.
I think if the teachers' union spoke for all the teachers, it would be different, but they don't. All the teachers are not involved in the teachers' union, so I believe we can sit down at the table and talk to them. But as far as being, you know, I feel like if they, there's, they speak for everybody a lot, but people think we feel withdraw to them, we owe somebody something. And that's not something that, you know, we owe anybody anything. We can sit down, listen and negotiate and talk about, you know, teacher salaries and what education things or what they need and be done and come to it at a mutual basis. But as far as being withdrawn to a teachers' union because they feel they speak for everybody, then there's not, that's not going to happen. But I think that we can sit at a table and sit down and have a common goal, which is our children. So if we want to sit down with them and talk and have a conversation, figure out how to best educate our children, by all means, do it. But if they feel we owe them something because they're a teachers' union, we don't.
All right, thanks Will. Information, Dan, here we go. All right, David, that one's good.
Teachers' Union, I think what happens is this. Everybody hears the term teachers' union and they think about the old term that was used for students. This teachers' union, basic information. There are 1,300 teachers in District 51. 800 are in the union. Basically, what the teachers' union does, it allows for all of those voices to be heard, okay? What is due one person, and that's the president. And what you have to remember is this. Yes, there are individuals that aren't members of the teachers' union, but yet still, they do enjoy the benefits of all the union members. The teachers' union doesn't just speak for teachers either. They speak for some of the support staff. They also give a voice to those others that aren't looked at as educators. I.e., bus drivers, lunchroom lady. What you have to remember is there is a wide breadth that the teachers' union covers.
Thank you. Nick?
Public education is about representing the public. That's everyone, including the union. I think it's a good thing for our teachers to have that resource if they feel like they need more representation. One thing that a lot of people might not know, it came up in one of our forums, is although teachers, you know, lazy, they don't want to work very much, it's the union. Last negotiation, our teacher union fought for extra days with students. We actually have 10 less contact days in this district. The teachers' union wanted five, they want all 10. They fought for five. The district gave them three. So teachers are, know what their students need, contact days with them. And they're fighting for that and that's what the union is fighting for, at least our teachers' association. Like Austin mentioned, other things in the past, yeah, there's no kneebreakers in here, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Did you hear a big question?
Do you think that teachers' unions play too big of a role in our schools?
So, yes, I do. I think that the shift of power has gone too much to the union and too much away from the parents. I think we see that show up by teacher union endorsements. And then if you're not endorsed by the teachers' union, you're called anti-teacher, which has personally happened to me. I don't know any person up here who put their hat in the ring that is anti-teacher. I mean, why would we be doing this? So I think the power shift has changed. I think locally, our association is good. I think it's a challenge though, when you have to negotiate with the union, maybe that can be contentious, that then also gives money to candidates or endorses candidates. So I do think there's a bit of money waters when it comes to that.
All right, thank you. Let's keep giving last and sharing.
So I've actually been on both sides of the union. As a prosecutor, I have prosecuted teachers where the union provided representation. That was my first introduction to unions. And if I were an employee, would I benefit from having some sort of representation more than me against my boss or me against my institution? So that was my first experience with the union, is actually being on the other side of them. Now being on the school board, I've gone through two seasons of negotiations. And what I can tell you is I think they bring legitimate issues to the table. They are well-studied. When they bring them to the table, they've been well-studied, well-researched. They also give us notice for the next year of what they're interested in. In my current term as a school board member, I would say that's the scope of my experience with them. I don't think they, I don't feel pressure from them week to week or month to month. But I feel like they bring some legitimate issues to the table and we want, we all want inspiring teachers.
All right, thank you. We're going to do one more question from the audience and then we will move on to opposing statements. So the last one is, are there other ways to get funds to make D-51 programs stronger? Are there other ways to get funds to make D-51's programs stronger? So David, you're up next.
I think research has to be done. I think you have to have a specific individual in the district that is, their sole responsibility is to go out and find funding. And a funding that doesn't affect the taxpayer. So I look at it from the standpoint of research being done. There are dollars out there. Right now, we know there are COVID dollars out there. COVID dollars are going to come to an end. However, there are other dollars that can be located. There are dollars for, examples, to inspire children. Those are dollars that are out there and we may not be taking advantage of them. So this is ironic because this question was asked before. And my response was the same, that there should be some individual or some type of vehicle that District 51 creates simply to find monies to help with programs and student success.
Thank you, David. Andrea.
So in El Paso County or College Springs, it is, the mill levy is actually tied to student performance there. So if student performance actually decreases, their bill levy decreases. I think there's actually other counties and districts that are doing things that actually have ideas of where we can get money. Because mill levy money is money that we can get directly into the classroom. And so just like David said, with research, I don't think we need to recreate the wheel. I think there's actually other places where we can go look, that we can get monies directly in our rooms.
Thank you. Austin.
There are absolutely other ways. You can do through, I forgot the word for a second. You can do it through stakeholders. You can do it through social media campaigns. There are also money through the Department of Education, both federally and state. You know, and again, like David had said, there is COVID dollars and those are coming to an end. But there are plenty of other ways to attain funds for our education system. And, you know, through stakeholders, you can invite the stakeholders in and tell them and show them what their money would be. And again, you got to be transparent with that, but overall, that would work. You get the stakeholders in there and you show them that this is what we need it for. This is, you know, it goes towards projects in the classroom. It goes towards building funds. So again, you know, there are tons of other ways. We just need to explore and use the opportunities.
All right, thank you, Austin. Angela.
So I love the idea of having somebody that's really looking for those different vehicles that are out there. David had mentioned COVID money and that would be something that I'd be really cautious about. I would be really careful about any monies that we get outside that are held with strings. So I would just want to be really careful that whatever strings were held there represented the community and was the very best thing for our kids and our teachers. I would also look for money that went directly into the classroom, support teachers, support the things that they need to be able to deliver the education that they need to deliver. I would also look for maybe something that would help us with the maintenance problem that we are facing with a lot of our buildings. So, you know, something that was really focused that direction. Again, I would want to know where the strings are. I would not be looking for money that just brings a lot of cash into the middle level of the district.
So we talk about a lot of things like that and we actually talk about building like little committees to find money from within, to go through, go to the budget extensively, have this committee go through each of the department heads and find out where we can save money, find out where we can get money from. There might be money within our own budget that we don't have to worry about getting things from the outside. But, you know, and I'm not saying cut jobs and cut this out, but, you know, maybe go through it and find out where we can cut the needle a little bit. You know, we see something we may not need, something so expensive, or, you know, go through our own programs. So a lot of times you can find it within. So I think that we get that, got our departments together and find out where we can put our data together and find out where we can turn the fella, we can find something within.
All right, thanks Will.
Fake sales, oh, right. No, but all seriousness, we have a really good foundation here, D-51 Foundation. I don't know if you know about it, but they raise funds through local businesses, the banks, construction companies, money that goes directly into the classroom. Money that goes directly into the classroom. Uh, they're buying student supplies, they're bringing new teachings in for teachers, or teachers can go to other teaching trainings. And these are direct money from the community going right into the classroom. I think we support programs like that that's still building up and doing some amazing work. They're raising tens of thousands of dollars each year and supporting, and so I think reaching out to the community uh through charity is a good way to bring in some more resources.
All right, thanks, Nick. And Trish?
So, I think the main thing we have to focus on is sustainability. So, I think when we talk about grants, you know, monies can come and go, and programs then are not sustainable, or positions are not sustainable. Um, so I think whatever funds we look at has to be sustainable so that the overall goals of kids are met, because we can't have things come and go. Um, our budget is huge. Uh, an extremely large percentage is based on teacher, our salaries alone. So, when we strip the budget, it comes down to looking at every position and see how does it benefit the district, how does it benefit the classrooms? Uh, but I think uh the idea of maybe having a grant writer that has some foreseeable sustainability, um, and I think more active work um on the state level about how the formula um used by the state does not um give District Fifty-One a very good advantage.
All right, perfect, thanks Trish. All right, folks, that's gonna wrap up all the questions for today. Um, but we are gonna give the candidates one more shot. I talked to you guys, it'll be their last, hopefully, biggest impression of the night. So, we're gonna give each candidate two minutes to get uh do closing statements or closing remarks. It's a better word for, for statement. Um, candidates going to start off with? Nick? Two minutes.
Do I get two?
You get two.
I won't use two. This might be a little bit different, let me just hit my points here. So, I'm striving to make sure that we have a teacher in every classroom. Sixty vacant positions right now. I want to make sure that we support every student. That means that we support both.
The college.
College and career tracks. And then finally, being a board member that listens, that goes beyond the board and comes out to you, the community, gets your questions and most importantly, gives you the answers. But I'll end differently, because I care so deeply about our democracy. And I have worked on initiatives in this community, and two years ago, it was about forty-two percent turnout rate for uh the election. Less than half of our community voted, and there were close elections. And so, that's only around twenty percent of our community making decisions that impact all of us immensely. I know everyone in this room, if you came out here, you're gonna vote, and thank you for doing that. Thank you for doing that, because you're actually in a minority. But what I want to ask of you is after tonight, please go and talk to your friends. Even if you know that they're a great voter, oh, they vote all the time, still ask, because you never know. You should have your ballot. I'm running to make sure that we have a great education system for our future. But most importantly to me, make sure you turn out and vote, because it makes a huge difference. I want your voice to be heard, and that's how it's heard in our country and our democracy. So, thank you all for inviting me tonight, it was a lot of fun, I love doing these, we only have like two left, so this is a great experience. I look forward to coming out again, hopefully as a board member, but if not, I'd still love to see you. Thank you, my name is Nick Allen, running for District C.
All right, thank you, Nick. Next, Trish.
Um, so I'm Trish Meyer, and I'm running for District C, and really all I can tell you is that in my almost thirty years as a public servant, the things that strike me is what I've learned as a prosecutor focuses on transparency, safety, and accountability. And I don't think those are skills that you just show up with one day and utilize them one day or not another day. I think they're just values, values that I've learned over the course of my career. Um, I can tell you that I work hard to make everything as transparent as possible for the school board, trying to make sure communication can be better, trying to make sure contact with parents, families can be better. And one thing I do want to tell you too is, school board members meet with people a lot of times outside of the school board meetings too. I think it's super important that school board members be available. If somebody contacts me and wants to talk to me, I will ask them, when do you want to meet? And I would prefer to do it in person rather than an email conversation. I think people deserve to know the personality of the person uh of the, of the candidate that they're talking to. Uh, because of my work in in public safety, I care deeply about having safe and inspiring schools. Um, right now, I'm a big proponent of the Grand Junction High School. I think we have facilities that are gonna be in need shortly, probably Central High School next, based on the priority and the maintenance schedule of the schools. Um, and I think it's not only safety, but it's something that has to be inspiring for kids and um teachers. Um, and lastly, it's accountability. You know, when we talk about testing and when when I hear teachers talk about pe- testing, or uh parents or candidates talk about testing, we're not trying to test a test, we're trying to make sure there's growth. And it doesn't matter what walk of life a child has been in, it shouldn't matter whether they're extremely academic, whether they struggle in school, whether they have been victimized in life, whether they come from a trap of life that you and I don't know. Every kid deserves an uh an opportunity for growth, and that's really what we need to be focused on. Thank you.
So, some things we didn't talk about tonight, that, I mean, we all had some great questions, and and we talked about, you know, how we felt about this, how we felt about that, but we didn't talk about CRT. You know, CRT came out and and we asked if it's, if it's, if it's going on in our schools. Well, CRT is a college course, but there are ideologies that are being taught around it. And I've constantly, and I can see experience some this weekend, with some programs that I chose not to be called. Um, I was a, I was a maroon, um, I was a token, I've been just a black guy running for office, um, just, you know, various things. So, if, imagine how I felt as a fifty-one-year-old man being called things that, you know, I worked my butt off for. I am proud that I am a black man born from, in China, Wyoming. I'm glad to get where I'm at right now. But to be called the things I was called this week by people in our community, imagine how our kids feel. When we have teachers telling somebody that are more special than somebody else. When we have, you know, our kids telling kids, you're not better than me because I, I, you have Jordans on, you're wearing bro wings bought from Walmart, or your clothes are better than me. We have teachers telling our kids that you should be privileged, you know, or you should, you should be ashamed to be white, you should be, you should, you're special because you're different than anybody else. These things are being taught to our kids, and and it's not right. It's not right. I am a proud American, I'm a proud black American, and I'm proud of the greats I've accomplished in my lifetime. And I'm hoping that I can be a school board member for our schools. My kids, my eight-year-old daughter has, she deserves to have a beautiful school future. And with me walking around the hallways and talking to teachers and talking to parents, I will achieve that. And I'm hoping our education gets better than what it is, because we cannot have a hateful world. And as long as I'm around in this town, it won't be hateful. Thank you.
All right, Andrea?
That's gonna be a hard act to follow. Uh, again, Andrea Heitz running for District C. So, I am a mom, obviously personally vested, um, in staying with great education. You know what? What, I think what it boils down to is, we've lost stability, we've lost character and form too. And and I think there's things that, and I know our teachers want to eat in our kids, and and I think we're failing our students in in way, in more ways than just that they don't know math and science and history. I learned so much about character in school. And and we've just gotten, again, we have so much noise and so much distraction in our classrooms that it's it's just, like Will said, it's pitting people against one another. I want school to be school. It needs to be a place where kids are excited to come and learn, we have opportunities, like many other Kansas has said, where, you know what? Some kids go to school because they really look forward to shop, or whatever it, their thing is. Sometimes that's the only thing that gets them to your math class. We've gotta start going back and looking at what worked, instead of always trying to figure out what was the new shiny thing that we need to do. We need to look to the past and see where we found successes. And so, I just feel like we need to sometimes take five minutes and just take a deep breath and like look at the situation. We tend to be too reactionary, and and we need to find what really works. Again, I'm Andrea Heitz running for District C.
Uh, so I'm gonna touch on a few things, uh, along with Will here. Uh, I, this weekend I had a really nasty email come across my email. I got called a meth head, I got told to eat some words that I'm not gonna repeat. You name it, it was about a ten paragraph email calling me all sorts of names. Pe- your kids are watching this, your kids are watching how you are acting in public and how you respond to people. Teach your kids kindness and it will refer, and it'll, it'll quite frankly come back into the classroom. We talk a lot about bullying and how we can end it. It it starts at home, it starts with how you, how your kids are watching you act. Your kids watch you bully somebody, right, they're gonna pick up on that and think it's okay. So, a- again, we need to be kind and we need to start teaching kindness at home. But again, my name is Austin, I'm running for District C, uh, I'm a graduate of Freedom Monument. And I am running to be a voice for the teachers, the parents, and the kids, and to make sure that our kids have a fair, safe, and amazing education, to get them pretty far in life. You know, a- again, it starts in the classroom. If we can spark a passion in these kids in the classrooms and get them far in life with what they're learning today in the classrooms, great. You know, i- if we can at least have a class that a kid is excited to come to school for, you know, P.E., sports, theater, great. If if we can keep these kids in school and teach them and keep them going, and spark these passions and get them going, you you never know the potential of those kids, and and that is why I'm running. Because I want the kids to have these potentials, I want them to have these sparks that, you know, I want them to have these sparks that were created in the district that I was graduated from.
Thanks, everybody, for coming out. I know it's getting colder and harder to to get out, and it's dark and all of that, so thank you for coming out and spending a little more time with us. Um, you know, a great education just sets you up for everything else in your life. And I got into this because I really wanted to do what I can to make sure that these kids are made a really strong foundational education that's gonna motivate them through the rest of their lives. As I mentioned, I I own a post-secondary school, and one particular student comes to mind, but I will share her story a little bit with you. She came into us, um, she could hardly look you in the eye. Her math skills were very poor, her reading skills were poor. We really questioned whether or not we should allow her into the program, but she she had a lot of passion for it and really felt that she could do it. We knew it would take a lot of extra effort, but we decided we were really ready to do this with this young woman. She could even order her own food in a restaurant. So, she started in, and she just started growing and blossoming and doing better and gaining some confidence. And I'm thinking, man, what if we could make sure that all of our kids coming out of District Fifty-One came out with some more confidence, better skills, better prepared? Not leave it up to their next school or their employer to be able to fill in those gaps for them. So, fast forward a few years, she is completely independent, being very successful, and loving her wife. And I just want to make sure that these kids get that good start that they're, that they're so deserve, they so deserve. So, I want to make sure that I'm there for the kids, I want to make sure to be there for the teachers, making sure that they're supported and they have the things that they need and they can do the things that they do best. And lastly, that I'm there for the, for the taxpayers, that we are transparent and we're doing the job that you want us to do there as well. Again, Angela Newman, running for District D.
David, you're up next.
What happened to the cutting off that the mic had?
Right?
I'm just kidding. It's ironic that uh we're all here and we're all here for students. Um, I'm here, I'm here for students because I I I raise students. Uh, I believe that we have a great school district here. District Fifty-One, the the vision is to engage, equip, and empower all students. And it's it's up to the teachers to do that. But in order for that to occur, teachers have to have the tools. And sometimes those tools are like a new Grand Junction High School, a new facility. Sometimes those tools are nothing more than a, than a teacher's aide or a substitute teacher. Now, as a, as a school board member, what a school board member has to do is they have to walk and talk. If you are going to tell your constituents something, then you have to back it up. I'm a business owner, if I tell my clients something, I have to follow through. And I think that's the same thing that a school board member has to do. There has to be transparency. We're talking about Grand Junction High School, we're talking about the bond issue, we talked about the habit stall. One of the things that occurred was there wasn't enough transparency. One of the things I also believe that has to occur is this. We have the three silos of education, reading, writing, and arithmetic. Those have to be exten- they have to be expanded. What we have to do is we have to include mental and physical health. Mesa County is fifth in the state for teen suicide. If that's not a mental health issue, I don't know it is. We also have to provide our students with financial literacy. A lot of them don't know how to, literally, how to balance a checkbook. Or, when the credit card statement comes, there's additional money that has to be paid rather than the original purchase price, and that's because of interest. And the last thing that we really, I mean, you look around around this room, we're talking about societal diversity. Look around the room.
All right, thanks, Nick. All right, so we just all have a gigantic, big one of these, we applaud. All right, folks, so all of you are voters, um, make sure that your ballots are in by seven P.M. November second, all right? Uh, get out and vote, get your neighbors out and vote, this is not time procrastination, all right? So, if you get it in after that time, after that date, it's not gonna count, sorry. Um, after this, the board is going to meet, the Libertarian Board is gonna meet, and we're gonna discuss everything that the candidates talked about, and we're going to decide whether or not there's a candidate that we want to endorse. Now, if you don't know about Libertarian, we don't agree on anything, so it's probably not gonna happen, right? But if that's something that you want to be a part of, if you want to be a part of 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 um the Libertarian Party and and decide and have voting rights on who we endorse and who we don't, um, then come to our meetings and and sign up. It's only ten dollars to be a Mesa County Libertarian, you do have to register as a Libertarian, um, but that is that incentive. Um, October twentieth, we are going to be holding a social. Um, socials are just our time for all the Libertarian-minded individuals to come together and talk and drink some beer and eat some pizza. It's a lot of fun, that's gonna be on October twentieth. Go into your calendars, delete whatever you had going on on that Wednesday, and come to our social. If you absolutely can't delete that, then every third Wednesday of the month, we meet at the same time, same place, at Old Chicago, at six P.M. So, come, have a beer, and discussion with us. Um, last thing is, uh, if you can, help our volunteers out, sack a few chairs here and there. We have a little bit around the the area, before you say, oh, if you are wanting to talk one-on-one with candidates, um, that's fine. We just ask, again, you can take it over to, what is the place called?
Noble Cup.
Noble Cup, take it over there and get some goodies there. Um, so, thank you, everybody, for coming, I I really like seeing the community come out. Thank you, volunteers, awesome. What's uh, how's it going this year, I'd say?
Not over the first year.
I'm waiting in the fight.